I thought you just bought a haul truck.
Uh, that was for the dumpster, I believe.
No, it's a Brown Mack.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Are you on?
Yes, sir. Can you?
Yes, sir. Uh, we're ready to get started if you're ready.
Yep.
All right. Okay, it's Tuesday, October the 6th, 2020, and it's about five minutes after 10:00. And I'm gonna call a meeting to order. Uh, we do have a forum here this morning and acknowledge any guests that's here today at the same time. And we're here to deliberate and consider action on the foreign items. Number one is discussing appropriate approved purchase of vehicles for each commissioner in precinct one, two, and three, and emergency management, mechanic, and precinct three haul truck, the number, uh, one-ton truck with a work bed for the county fleet and seeking the financing. Ms. Lee, as you'll deliberate on that.
We're sharing duties still. These are the ones that we talked about for 21 that we, for 21, and this allows us to start looking and getting some quotes, um, and go ahead and get ready so that we can do our financing and everything in January. But sometimes it takes three, four months to get vehicles in. Sheriff, as with this, we didn't put y'all on here yet, you know, the ones that you usually do for your next year, so we thought we'd get with both of y'all, Sheriff, should we get y'all, and then we could put it on the next quarter show so you could go ahead.
Has Enterprise and Nellie ever got back to the first?
They've been on hold.
Okay, if they've been on hold with the, with everything, ever think it could have been a whole challenge?
Yeah, I don't even have any, I don't have any quotes for any time, but if you, and we had talked about just doing, starting out, and Sheriff's Department, things like that, so y'all kind of talk about them, you know, and, you know, before Sheriff's Department comes in, and, uh, so if you want to get it back down here to talk, maybe.
I've talked a bit to Nellie, and don't want me to remember that, but I'm thinking in terms of, we have 120,000, but I'm thinking everybody, what's that count?
Yeah, 'cause we had put all that on hold too, because COVID has made, um, those two sheriffs, everything, so it might be something I want to talk about, if we could put back on me just.
Might be, see if we can tell him that guy over here, sit down with everybody.
Well, the rea-, the reason, and I talked to him about it, but in our program of vehicles for the commissioners is when they, they use it a couple of years, and they step it on down in their fleet. Uh, if we go to the lease program, then we'd be constantly turning it back, never build up our fleet. Uh, so we're trying to create this goal to where we have updated list, uh, fleet of trucks can our commissioner use. So, uh, it may fit the Sheriff's Department, uh, for the precincts, I don't think that's gonna fit. So, uh, that, that's the reason I hadn't been any, he won't come into Commissioner's Court and explain his deal, but, uh, I just don't see that working.
All right, so how many years have you been talking about this? How many, how many, the term? Because I talked with him briefly, but he didn't go in any, you know. What he takes, they take a good mile or two where they can resell it to the public. And I'm thinking, probably over two years, the way they run that city.
Yeah, he, he was, he was telling me it had to be less than 100,000 miles, and, and I, I don't know how long it'd take to create that in the Sheriff's Department. I mean, y'all.
We have three to figure, 100,000, something like that. Unless you're the sheriff, you're running 50,000 a year without, without moving there.
One, no, one thing I didn't mention, and that is the, the fleet vehicle, the county fleet that we have listed, that's actually the one we were talking about for float plane fleet, you know, up there at, uh, precinct three. That's what we're talking about on that. I didn't elaborate in the, just, uh, but that's, that's what we were talking about.
Okay.
We just give it down to the building, do we give it down to the, you know, after the? Yeah, I think we need to get someone to zoom down here and get this all over, and let's put our heads together. And, uh, do you still have that contact information?
Yeah, I think I talked about email, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and it's not we've got a phone number or a, who.
Okay, well, we need, uh, we need to set up a deal over weeks. Well, we just.
I'll be at Sheriff's, Sheriff's, and get it y'all.
Well, I'm available, just like you.
Okay. All right. I hear a motion.
I thought we just bought a haul truck, precinct three.
We okayed it, but this is, this is actually buying it.
Oh, I thought, I thought you bought the Brown Mack. I thought that's what that.
Uh, yeah, precinct three hadn't bought one, has it?
We, we approved one.
The Brown Mack?
Yeah, we.
I thought that's what that.
We approved it.
Yeah, one ton, one ton with a bed on it.
Yeah, but this, this is the financing for it.
Oh, okay.
This, this is all the financing for the, the commissioners, one, two, three, and, and the mechanic truck we talked about.
Have we hired a mechanic yet?
Uh, have it. Working on it.
Working.
I mean, y'all, y'all decided not to buy it.
These were free, except by this, for next year, and this is just so we can get it all, like, and find out exactly what, you could discover everything that was listed and touches, and, you know, we may not need all this, but we, we had listed everything to make sure that we, you know, we had given.
I'll make that motion that we approve the purchase of the vehicle for each commissioner, uh, precinct one, two, and three, emergency management, uh, mechanic, uh, precinct three haul truck, uh, one-ton truck with the bed, and, uh, the county fleet and seek financing.
I second.
Where do you approve it, really? Motion been made by Mr. White, and second by Mr. Thompson, that we approve the purchase of those vehicles. Is any discussion? Not all in favor? Oral. Number two, the discussion, appropriate approval of the county's CRF allocation to Burtville, Newton, and Dewville ISD for local share cooperation, uh, connectivity. And, uh, Lee, you'll spell on that.
Remind this committee, I've got Mark to back up to that. This is on our CARES Act from week nine that we were allocated in, um, back in April, when all this started. The three little different agendas came to the judge and I requesting, um, part of our allocation to help them with the cost of their hotspots that they had purchased. Um, if I remember them telling me right, correct me if I'm wrong, Judge, that whatever we allocate to them, the state matches for them. They came to us with a total of about 134, $532, they, and they told us that anything that we gave them would be very appreciative. So we went back and forth, looking at numbers, looking at what the cost that we've accumulated so far, and, um, judge had told us, you know, they were, he was, you know, when they were there, they, he had the 25,000, so, and they're like, whatever they get, fine. So what we did is we took the total, I took the total cost, and I took 25,000, and I did each ISD percentage of the total and broke it down, and y'all still got to talk you up on your field, but Burtville ISD, if approved, we get $7,250, this ISD, 11,000, $1,250, and Dewville ISD, 6,000, and that would be a total of 25. And then we claim it as an allocation to, I forgot what they call it, uh, community sharing, or something like that, um, we claim that on our side under the TDM side, right?
Yes.
At 75, 25, so we'll get 75% of that, that we share with them, but the state matches, the education ISD matches that, which is the school district.
It just shows some appreciation. There's not that much money, uh, for the school district, but it does show the appreciation, uh, between the county and the school. There's a reason, uh, Leah and I come up with the $25,000, uh, in this percentage, uh, for each school district, depending on how much they spend. I hear a motion.
Don't move.
I second it. Motion been made by Mr. Fuller, and second by Mr. White, that we approve the CRF allocation to Burtville, Newton, and Dewville Independent School District. Uh, is in discussion? Not all in favor? Oral. Number three, we're going to pass over because there is some, uh, controversy about some financing on that, so we'll just pass over that item. Number four is discussion, appropriate to take action to deny appeal for Ms. Minnie McCain on, uh, 2016. I know it says 15 on y'all's paper, but, uh, type of error in CDBG housing, and, uh, Mr. Mark, you'll address
Thank you, Judge. If you don't mind, I'm gonna ask Christie to come up as well. She has worked directly with Ms. McCain on this, so she can provide us some more direct information on it. Uh, basically, what it amounts to is Ms. McCain did submit an application for the 2016 housing program. Uh, at that time, they reviewed her application as far as her income and so forth. She met all the eligibility criteria. She provided us with a deed in her name. Uh, we moved forward as far as moving on with the contractor. We did go so far aside, a construction agreement with the contractor. As with all of these housing projects, the first thing they do is send a survey out there to ensure that it's the house they're building is entirely on the footprint that, that the property owner owns, and they're not encroaching on any neighboring property or anything. As soon as the surveyor went out there, he said it was very apparent to him that the deed she provided and the property that our house is owned is not, not only is it not the same property, but it's separated by several other property owners' property. Uh, so we, we got back with Ms. McCain, we encouraged her to get legal counsel and see what she could do to get legal ownership of the property their house was on. She has resided on this piece of property for 50 years for their house, and apparently has never had legal title to that property. Uh, we're not questioning whether they purchased that property or not. What we're here for is to certify everybody we can for this program, but to make sure they meet the guidelines. Uh, bottom line, we cannot find that she has legal title to this piece of property. Uh, we, we did move forward with denying her application on that basis. Uh, we encouraged her once again to seek legal counsel, even, uh, Lone Star Legal. She did not move forward with that until she had received the denials. The, uh, the attorney with Lone Star Legal said it could be months if ever before they can get this straightened out. Uh, she did appeal the denial, it was not a timely appeal, but she did appeal. So the next step, we did want to go ahead and bring that to Commissioner's Court for y'all's awareness and for y'all to make a determination on it. Uh, if she, if y'all make a determination that you want to move forward with it, then that's what we'll do at this point in time. If you want to hold the denial, then she has the option of appealing to the GLO, and that'll stop it at that point. That'll be the final decision.
The property that she does own, that one, uh, she didn't, wouldn't consider building there?
Uh, yes, she would consider, uh, and we discussed that with her. The issue is the current house has to be demolished. We cannot leave that structure sitting there. That house is sitting on a piece of property that we don't know who owns. So we can't put the county at risk by going in there and demolishing a house on someone's property that you don't know who owns it.
Exactly.
And she's been there for 50 years. Uh, Christie, you could ask the post to it, but.
Yes, because we have gone, we have gone, the county has gone above and beyond trying to assist in any way possible. I believe the light bill, justice, and electric, she got in the late 60s. So there's no question that she's lived there, she's raised her kids there, but she does not own legal, she does not have legal rights to the property. And we have been dealing with this since the beginning of 2020. We have sent numerous letters, we've notified the daughter, you know, we, you know, I've given you a list of dates and everything. The denial we gave her, you know, finally sent her a letter that said, "We need a deed in your name to where the damaged structures sit," within 30 days. We gave her a deadline, she did not meet that, so a denial letter was sent. Then, Chris, on July the 1st, and on July the 14th, Crystal turned around and sent her a certified letter stating the same thing. That letter was never picked up and was returned and claimed. The letters, the first two letters that have, were sent to her, copies of it were also emailed to the daughter who was pushing this appeal issue, notifying her that, you know, "I am mailing your daughter, your mother this letter. I wanted you to be aware of what it said." I put her in contact with Lone Star Legal, but there's no way, I mean, we can't prove ownership.
To, to complicate matters, uh, the home that she's currently living in, it has flooded at least twice.
Yes.
Uh, the home that she lived in was built for her with us funds during I, uh, utilizing the deed that she provided in this application. So her stance this entire time is, "The government built me a house after Hurricane I with this same deed. Why can't you do it now?" Unfortunately, you know, two wrongs don't make a right. Just because it was not followed through and they were not aware at that time that deed she provided was not to her home, that doesn't mean we can just go ahead and follow suit with it and move forward with it. Once again, it puts the county at liability. Uh, the GLO, of course, they want us to assist as many homeowners as, as we possibly can, uh, but at the same time, the monkey falls back on the county's back, on the county's back, and the county is liable for these houses if, if they're not pursued property. And once again, we're fully aware of the fact that she cannot produce legal title. We're not questioning whether they purchased the property or not. It's, there's nothing on file showing they own that piece of property.
Who's been paying the taxes on it?
The appraisal district has it set up with the legal description of the property that she has a deed in her name for, but she's paying property, she's paying taxes on the house. Now, as far as who's paying taxes on that land where that house sits, I don't know that the appraisal district knows that. We've also, when we first started talking about this, because that area was actually a sawmill community way back when it first started, and everybody was related. So we mentioned, you know, you may, on your own, do a research, get a survey yourself to figure out who owns it. The daughter did not want to do that because they did not want to open up a can of worms and somebody to realize, you know, "Oh, I'm an heir to this property, so you're living in my house, get off the property." So they would not pursue it personally with the community trying to find out, "Help us figure out who owned it and, and correct it," because they didn't want someone coming in and trying to take mom's house away, which is very possible if somebody realized.
So if we built them a house now, someone still come in and say, "I have a new house." You could ask.
Yes. And this property, the property line of the land, the property line for the survey goes directly through this lady's house where she currently lives. So there's two different owners to the land. Two different, there's one side that's on one side of her house, that's owned by one family, and then right down the middle on the other side, it's another family. And it's like.
There's just a lot of unknowns in there. Uh, and once again, if you go to the appraisal district and they pull it up, it's plotted as two separate pieces of property, not adjoining. They have the same, same number in the appraisal district system because they have no way of tying the property that the house actually sits on to anything other than this other piece of property she owns, probably 300 yards away.
And y'all consulted with GLO, and GLO told y'all what?
Uh, GLO would like to see us move forward with it. Once again, we go back to them with the fact of, y'all are the ones saying that the individual has to prove ownership of the property. She cannot do that. Will GLO provide us anything in writing stating that y'all are aware of that and will take liability for that? And the response was, no.
So they're putting responsibility back on Newton County. Uh, they okay drill a house, but it's a big responsibility in Newton County.
That's, that's, and, and once again, I'm not trying to criticize GLO at all, but when she got the previous house, somebody probably sitting in Austin looked at the deed, saw that it was a valid deed, looked at her house, said, "Yeah, she's living in a house," and just moved forward with it. Uh, had, had the contractor not had a surveyor out there, and the surveyor picked up on that fact, uh, it could be that she has, that she has another new house right now, on a piece of property that she doesn't own. Uh, but once again, we, we are aware of it, and, you know, we cannot encourage the county to go forward knowing that, that you have a liability there.
The daughter even brought me a copy of the documents where her mother signed when she got the house that she's currently living in, and it, and a release of lien to the deed that they submitted with this application. That deed is for the property that is in Ms. McCain's name, so it's very obvious that they did submit the wrong deed when the house was built, but nobody, like Mark said, nobody caught it.
And it, it included a flat, and it's very plain, if, if you look at that flat, that that's not the piece of property that the house is on. Uh, and once again, that was a release of lien that GLO released, uh, releasing the five-year preferred applicable law on this piece of property.
Has there been any exceptions of leaving the house standing and building her a new house anyway, on her property?
I'm sorry, Clark?
Building a house on her property and not destroying the house that's, uh?
No, it's, it's, once again, it's a GLO requirement that if you're building a new house, it's because the current house is either substandard or whatever reason, it needs to be demolished. Therefore, it's a HUD requirement. We cannot leave that house standing and build another house. And the GLO, and they've gone kind of back and forth. Once again, this is something that's gone on for an extended period of time. Uh, at one point in time, they're fine with us building the house on this piece of property that she has ownership of, but there again, they're requiring the solid house be demolished.
She probably deserves one more so than some of the ones that we built, but I don't think we have any choice, have to deny it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to put the county at risk, uh, for any legal action. Uh, now, once we deny, uh, Mark and them deny, uh, denied, then it goes to GLO. And what GLO does is tito lift GLO.
Well, I make most of the narrative here.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller, and second by Mr. Thompson, that, uh, we deny the appeal for Ms. Minnie McCain on the 2016 CDBG housing. Uh, in discussion? All in Number five is to approve the tech stock grant for routine airport maintenance program project for 2020, 2021. Ms. Lee?
Yes, sir. This is the, um, they call it the ramp grant. It's, uh, look at it, the total amount, estimated cost of 20,000. This is where they reimburse that half, so our part, we would get up to $10,000 back. And this is for the herbicide, and just the general maintenance guy at the airport. Um, and this is just, has to go through court to be approved.
It's something that, uh, actually happens every two years?
Yeah, every couple of years, it comes up.
Make the motion that we approve the tech stock grant for the routine airport maintenance program project for, uh, 2020, 21.
I second that motion.
Motion been made by Mr. White, and second by Mr. Fuller, that, uh, we approve the tech stock grant. Any discussion? All in favor? Oral. Uh, number six, discuss with appropriate approve adding solid waste full-time position starting October 1st, 2020, an authorized budget amendment. I share your.
We're gonna talk about, we're gonna, he's still learning. About January, he still has it all.
I, I.
He's doing very well, doing very well.
I have a question. If, if we're going to approve this, this guy on October 1st, what about the part-time help in the treasure, in the treasurer's, not treasurer's, yeah, treasurer's office? Why, why can't we do hers?
They didn't request it.
They, they didn't request it?
They haven't requested it.
They haven't.
So they can request, and it should be approved just like this?
Well, they requested, and it's, uh, whatever approval through the Commissioner's Court, but, uh, they haven't requested it for me to put it on our agenda.
The, uh, the first one is to, um, add full-time expectations. It's gonna do it at, this was, I think the guy was with the workforce program or something. Anyway, it requested to be at 11, 11 an hour, like the other sanitation workers that work for the different areas, um, which would be an annual salary of $23,108. So if it started, if we, if it's approved, it starts back in October, so October through December, it would be, uh, a total of the benefits of $9,800.
I think this person that, uh, that's requesting to move to this full-time position did work for the workforce, and the workforce stopped, uh, September 30th, so, uh, Commissioner Precinct Three has, uh, wanted to put him to full time, and then he'd be watching over the containers, and when he's not watching. watching over the containers, and when he's not watching over the containers, he'll be washing and doing some maintenance on, on the garbage being or something.
He's been performing this job already.
Yeah, under, uh...
And what is his salary?
Uh, it would be eleven dollars, eleven just an hour this year. Because he, it's what the, it's what the part-time maintenance, the maintenance costs make, I mean, it's a solid wage cost make.
Why does, I think I remember something, you can't have a full-time employee, county full-time employee less than thirty thousand, or thirty to thirty-one thousand?
I don't remember.
I read that in TACT last week.
No, they just can't.
Can't have one making more than good. I've never heard you couldn't have one making less.
Probably right at thirty or something, you know. We have some that were twenty-nine hours, not remember what birthday it is right now. Yeah, I was going to say it's right at twenty. But they can't, you know, part-time can't make over twenty-nine hours a week, but full-time can do the forty hours that's down there between now and then. Yeah, because every county is different on the rate. Yeah, every county is different.
Yeah, but...
So...
Yeah, you, but I thought it was a minimum, a full-time employee for a county of it, uh, worker was thirty-something, thirty-one.
I don't remember that. And she didn't bring that up when she saw that, we talked about, talked with her about these guys. She didn't bring that up. The two salaries, twenty-one, yeah, it's going to be, oh, it's already twenty-three. Yeah, because we thought some of them that made in the mid-twenties, some of our, other people make that.
Well, my maintenance man is worth, be making less than that.
And then you got, uh, there's a lady at the library...
I could be totally wrong.
And, you know, but I don't ever remember.
Well, Jean, we don't make much more than that.
I know that. I know that. And that's the reason that I remember reading.
You thought you fell out.
I said, "Yeah, I'm going to ask for a raise."
All right. I think the big thing is men in the budget, right? So that he can start in October, as of October.
That's right.
Okay.
Well?
Your motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. Thompson that we approve the adding a solid waste full-time position starting October the first and authorizing a budget amendment. Any discussion? All in favor? Oral.
You don't owe us for this. I know it.
Number seven, discussing appropriate, uh, approve solid waste 2021 full-time to, uh, begin in October one, 2020, to authorize budget amendment, and that's the truck driver, as I understand?
Yes, sir. That's the one that we approved for the 2021 budget, and he's actually been driving the transportation truck every day and doing some other transportation work. So Commissioner Farnaby requested that he go, we go ahead and implement that now so he can start being paid out of the, out of the solid waste.
So this is two different people?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's actually using, uh, one of the dump truck drivers to fulfill this, uh, garbage or solid waste truck driver, and so he's actually loaning him, or however you want to say it, uh, from his department over to the solid waste. So we already approved it for, uh, January one, so he wants to go ahead and start it in October, so he can, and hire him another truck driver to, uh, fill that job.
So these are two solid waste drivers then?
No, it's one, one worker and one driver.
Okay.
One that watches the, actually, people that deliver is, is item number six. Now, number seven is the truck driver itself.
Exactly what is he going to do again? The worker?
Huh?
The worker, what, exactly what's he going to do?
The worker?
Yeah.
Uh, he, he's going to be watching two different stations, and then, uh, what time he's not, then he's going to be washing and mowing and cleaning up around each, each site.
Oh, so he's going, he's going to work the sites up in Burtville, two sites in Burtville?
Uh, I think so.
Okay, all right, okay.
He, he's working the sites, the, uh, compactor, and he's going to work them during, uh...
He's going to be steam cleaning, uh, yours and Bill's and whoever, uh, in his off-time, and he's not watching, uh, the site itself.
That's only going to leave him one day because he's got two sites up there and it's open.
He's going to work both of the sites, plus he's going to wash and clean.
He's going to have one day to wash and clean, that's it.
I hope we pay him...
Well, maybe he'll rotate that out, like, once a week, go check this, you know, have a schedule to check another site once in a while, kind of do that kind of thing.
I like he can stay busy, that thing.
Yeah, he's going to stay busy.
Yeah.
What, what's that? Job working those sites? It's work.
All right. Okay.
Your motion?
I second one.
I'll make that motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and, and, uh, second by Mr. White, was it?
Yes.
And, uh, to approve the solid waste 2021, uh, full-time, starting October first, 2020, and authorize budget amendment. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Oral. Number eight, discussing appropriate approve the resolution amending action item in the Newton County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan dated July, uh, 2017. Mr. Taylor?
Judge, uh, does everybody have a copy of this resolution? It was kind of late getting these out, so I did run a copy system, okay? Judge, measures, what this is, this is in conjunction with two possible applications to the Texas General Land Office for the mitigation action funding. Uh, I know we've all talked about this in the past, but in order to submit a project, part of the scoring criteria is, isn't included in any plan. Uh, one of the first plans we think of when we think of the county and planning as it relates to mitigation is the hazard mitigation plan. So we did want to present this to you in case either one or both of these projects do become submitted as an application. We've got that covered to get the additional scoring points for that. Uh, one of these projects would be the creation of a temporary shelter facility for residents that are displaced due to the disasters. Unfortunately, we draw house things kind of frequently, and so many of your citizens have to relocate outside the county because there is no place they can be temporarily out on a short-term basis. Uh, this potential application would be to provide a facility that, that would meet that need. Uh, the other one on here is the emergency water supply backup system. That would be both for the city of Newton as well as some of the rural water supplies that would interconnect these water supplies. So if any one of these systems went down, then the other system could help them out, provide a temporary potable water farm until they could get their particular system up and running again.
Who we're going to manage that, who's going to manage it? Uh, it'd be coordinated between each system. If it come to pass, uh, let's say Burtville run out of water, who, he's asking who would control it?
Uh, that, that would be the water system between the Newton Water System and, say, Burtville or, or any other water system.
It would have to be an interlocal agreement between all of them together, explaining, you know, how this would operate between one entity and the other.
Yes, sir. Yeah, without a path, it would have to be...
The details would have to be actually worked out, though. We're just trying, we're just trying to get the grant.
And once again, if this would not, uh, as it's looking right now, this would not be an ongoing deal as far as providing water one way or the other. It would be utilized in an emergency situation where those lights could be activated and the water provided.
I guess my thing, monthly cycling and that kind of thing is going to have to take place, so someone has to take that responsibility. Now, that's the detail we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a detail that would have to be worked out, uh, once we put it in operation, is to, uh, you know, who pays for what water when used and this, that, and other. So it'd be a lot of details that have to be worked out, but this is actually just a resolution to, to the application to get the grant. And my talk, my...
Right. Once again, this is, this is one of the scoring criteria, and so if either one of these are submitted as an application, then it'll help to get those five points on, on the application.
Yeah, and to explain a little bit about the points, uh, higher the points, the better we have to be granted for these grants, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, these, these applications, they're all competitive applications, and what that amounts to is just what it sounds like you're competing with everybody else that submits an application. The GLO scores these applications, and they start funding with the highest one scored, and they go down till they run out of money.
So that's all the counties in, in our region that we are competing against, or just a few, or...
Oh, there's, uh, certain counties, and I don't know exactly how many, there are several counties, and there's different, different ones of us in different groups. Uh, it's a top priority, I guess, especially in the sixteen.
Without boring you too much, there's six, there's fifteen, sixteen at Harvey funding. All three of them are the same application, other than the title at the top of it. Uh, when the money came down from HUD, it's divided up into three different groups for the different application cycles. Uh, for the fifteen, as an example, potentially, there could be close to six hundred applicants that could submit applications. Uh, for the sixteen, uh, you're looking at about one hundred and seventy-five applicants. And then for Harvey, you're looking, and once again, this is a best guess, uh, what you're looking at is the eligible counties, the entities as far as the municipalities that are within those counties, uh, as well as drainage districts, utility districts and so forth can submit applications as well. So these, these are extremely competitive applications.
Is there match on this?
Yes, sir, there's a one percent match. And once again, that's, that's a scoring criteria, to get those points, you have to commit to a one percent match.
The only thing concerns me about that is actually being able to afford it once you get it. You tell us it's going to be, this was discussed, I think, back when I, the I, or either one came through, we'd like to tell them on these. I don't know, but I'm going to leave, so it won't make any difference. That's the only thing that concerns me, is the money.
Uh, and there again, just for clarification, this is not authorizing the submission of an application. This is just looking at this particular component of the scoring criteria, that if the county elects to submit an application, you're going to get those points on the scoring for, for having it in a plan.
We need to be able to score in case we do pursue it.
Well? Your motion?
I make the motion that we approve the resolution amending, uh, action items for the Newton County Hazardous Mitigation Action Plan dated July of 2017.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Fuller that we approve the resolution amending the action item for the Newton County Hazardous Mitigation Action Plan dated July the seventh, uh, 2017. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Oral.
Okay.
Number nine, uh, discussing appropriate approve the sheriff and constable fee for 2021, and, uh, we reset those fees last year, and, uh, we just needed them approved so I could get them recorded in, uh, October fifteenth, right? And it's same as it was last year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. Thompson that we approve the sheriff and constable fee for 2021. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Oral. Uh, number ten, uh, discussion appropriate approve contract between Environmental Tree Service to provide tree removal and trimming of the Newton County. Uh, and this is around the courthouse, and we've had that discussion before, and that was before the COVID, uh, episode, and so I re-entered back into this contract again, and, uh, the money is the same.
How much was it? I can't remember. How much was it? I can't remember what it was.
Uh, what was it, thirteen thousand?
That's what I, okay, thank you. Was any local people bid on this?
Uh, no, because, uh, we requested an arbitrist, and, uh, nobody else has got their arbitrist license. So I never, I, nobody else didn't bid on it except you.
Thirteen thousand one hundred. Show me.
I'll second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. White that we approve the contract between the Environmental Tree Service to provide the tree removal and trimming of Newton County, uh, Courthouse Square. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor? And, all again. Three, go on. Okay, now your motion to adjourn.
Show me.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. White to adjourn.
I feel it's getting new courthouse, uh, all the way. The month, I feel it's getting new courthouse.